Welcome to the Oviedo City Council Meeting. It is Monday, May 4th, approximately 6:30 PM. We have all members of council present. If everybody could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and Councilwoman Drago or Deputy Mayor Drago, excuse me, why don't you lead us in the pledge?
I sure will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands our nation, our God, and his invisible, clear routine and justice for all.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Chief White, would you do the honors, please? And Chief, before you start the honors, you had given me the events we have coming up to announce later, but while we have a crowd here, why don't you, why don't you announce them now?
Oh, okay, Mayor, I'll be happy to.
Do you have them with you?
Yes. Well, as we have done in the past, Memorial Day is upon us and we have several activities planned for that day. The fallen Floridians Memorial Cross Tribute will return to the grounds of the Lawton House for the third year in a row. It is, setup day is May 15th and there will be a prayer vigil at 6:30 PM, a flag ceremony and Lane of the Wreaths, as we've done in the prior years. May 16th through the 26th, the tribute is open to the public from about 8 o'clock to 7 or 8 o'clock in the evening. And then, May 25th, Memorial Day itself, 9 AM, will be the Memorial Day Ceremony at that same location. This event is hosted by the military support team of the First United Methodist Church and the Historical Society is just grateful to have us all part using the land and so forth and helping facilitate that. And then, very importantly, our first dedication ceremony for the Oviedo Veterans Tribute at Oviedo on the Park will be the same day, but it'll be at 4 o'clock. The ceremony's coming together very nicely. The final folks actually confirmed over the weekend, so everything is falling into place. So we look forward to that. We'd like to invite the public, this past weekend, all the nameplates were installed, they've been covered for the time being, but we've got just a few little things to wrap up there. We've got the official fallen in service memorial monument and plate on order as well and that'll be in place before Memorial Day.
Will that be in place for the opening of Oviedo on the Park on the 16th?
Not quite sure it'll be available for the 16th.
It would be covered, I would assume, anyway, right?
Yeah, I think we especially want to cover that piece of the tribute, so we're looking forward to it.
Chief, you've done an outstanding job on our veterans memorial. I mean, I know you led the team with the American Legion and others who have helped you and it is really just exceptional. I think the public doesn't even realize how exceptional it is until we ribbon cut that park on the 16th, so great job.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and all the staff and others who have been on the committee. It's been, I think, the most rewarding thing to me over the past two years is talking to veterans and their families because I've heard some just incredible stories, so that's been my reward.
And I didn't mean to speak for the whole council, but I think, I think I do when I say that.
I definitely, I just brought my dad there to show him the tribute and he was just in awe. Great job.
Thank you. If you'd like to join me in prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, we're cognizant of all the tragedies that have been occurring across our nation and in other distant lands and we pray for healing and comfort, Lord. We pray for a hedge of protection on our country and for our military men and women. Lord, give them protection, keep them safe, keep their families safe and in good care while they're away. Father God, we pray for our elected officials and all of our city staff as we go about the business at hand before us and, Lord, we ask for continued blessings for our town. We pray this in your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chief. All righty, our first order of business, council, we have some ceremonial items, so Well, good evening, everyone. Our first ceremonial item tonight is that we like to recognize all the youth in our city who do exceptional things. You know, we always have the sports teams down and tonight we are going to recognize the academic side of our community because Oviedo is more than just the sports that we always talk about. I mean, we have great arts, academic, there are children who excel all over the place here in Oviedo and it's our privilege and pleasure to take time out of a council meeting and recognize them. So we're going to start with the Lawton Childs Middle School. And these children went to the 60th Annual State Science and Engineering Fair of Florida and we have a bunch of winners here. It says down here, and I'll read it, it says, "The 2015 State Science Engineering Fair of Florida was held March 31st through April 2nd at the Lakeland Center in Lakeland, Florida." The fair exhibited more than 834 projects with over 905 students involved. Of the 32 students from Seminole County Public Schools participating, 28 of the 32 were recognized in some manner. Together, the students won more than $3,600 in cash prizes, so let's give these kids a big round of applause. So we're going to start with the children from Lawton Childs Middle School and I'm going to assume that they're kind of lined up over in there. Is that you guys? Sort of? All righty, we're going to call you out. Are there principal or vice-principal here in the schools? Come on up. Lawton Childs? All righty. Good save, Councilman Schenck. And I'm sorry, you are?
Linda Mummy.
And Lawton Childs?
Yes, sir.
Principal, assistant? Principal? Principal. Top of the food chain. There you go. Would you like to introduce your students? You want me to do it? All righty.
I'll be reading them.
Okay, I'll introduce your students. First, we have, is Nikki Chon took fifth place in the biochemistry categories. Nikki here? Come on up, Nikki. Next, we have Connor Rodriguez, who took fifth place in physics. Is Connor here? No, give him a big round of applause. And next, we, I'm just going with the first name here, Sejhan, who took fourth place in the engineering category. Are you here, Sejhan? Now, Sejhan, I grew up with a name like Per Sampedi that everybody would murder all the time, so how do I pronounce that?
J. O. Prigashon.
Thank you. Guys, these are the winners from Lawton Childs Middle School. Give them a big round of applause.
This is just some of the students that represented us so well at the state level. We had, I think it was like 20-something students that totally went to state. We did exceptionally well and they deserve another round of applause for their hard work.
Everybody gather around? That's okay. That's usually me and... All righty, next up, we have our winners from Hagerty High School, who are at the same event from March 1st through April 2nd. So the Hagerty High School Award winners are Libby Smith, fifth place in psychology. Libby here? No, you're not Libby? Okay. No Libby. Then we have Nia Matey, who took sixth place in mathematics. She's not here either. Then I have John Roiro, took first place in senior physics. Now, is there anybody here from Hagerty High School? Principal, assistant principal?
I'm a teacher.
Come on up. Introduce yourself and tell us all about your kids.
They're amazing children. So the other two girls are not here because they're studying for their AP Calculus exam tomorrow, but we did get Jack to come. Jack actually won grand prize at state, so we're really proud of him. He's going on to ISAF next week? Yes. May 11th, to compete at the international level and hopefully, we take home some prizes there, too. I'm Sarah Evans and I teach at Hagerty, I teach the experimental science class, so four of my students got to go to state this year.
And we would be remiss if we didn't recognize all the great teachers that we had in Seminole County, so give her a round of applause. Yes, I am actually back here. Come on, Deputy Mayor, there you go, right there. Anybody who's on the side, come on up front here, you can get a shot. Is that that? Oh, you put that on Facebook, just tag us. Very welcome. Great job, guys, congratulations. Counsel, that is the end of our ceremonial items that we have to be down here for. Have a great night, guys, thank you. Please feel free to leave. Exactly. All righty. Moving along, our next item is a Police Week proclamation and is Chief here?
Chief.
Chief, chime in? Oh, Chief, chime in? I'm sorry, may I borrow you for a moment? Sir, can you explain Police Week to us just real quickly and then I have a proclamation here that'll be my honor to read for you?
Certainly, Mayor, thank you. See, Police Week is not only to honor our officers in general, but specifically on May 15th. It honors all of those fallen officers who have died in the line of duty. There's a program that's both in Tallahassee and in Washington DC at the memorial wall.
Great. Well, sir, we have a proclamation for everything that you and your officers do. I mean, you're out there on the front line all the time, protecting us without any regards for your own safety sometimes, so we all owe you a big debt of gratitude, so thank you.
On behalf of the men and women of the Oviedo Police Department, thank you very much, Mayor, and council members.
Absolutely, our pleasure. I'm going to have Deputy Mayor Drago read this for us because the police department is just near and dear to her heart.
Yes, it is.
Deputy Mayor, you're on.
Thank you. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as Police Week and whereas the members of the Oviedo Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Oviedo and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of law enforcement and that members of the Oviedo Police Department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the Oviedo Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service, now therefore I, Dominic Per Sampedi, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Oviedo, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 10th through 16th, 2015, as National Police Week in the City of Oviedo and urge the citizens of Oviedo to join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so have established for themselves a viable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens and further call upon all citizens of Oviedo to observe May 15th, 2015, as Peace Officer Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty and recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes.
Thank you so much, Deputy Mayor. That is just exceptional and again, we do owe all police officers our thanks, so let's give them a round of applause. That is the end of our ceremonial items. Is there anything else for the council? Mr. Cobb?
No, Mayor.
All right. I have something that I will do it later on under reports. So our first order of business this evening is the approval of the minutes of the April 20th, 2015 Regular Session. I'd like to entertain a motion to do so?
移到
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Councilman Schenck? Deputy Mayor?
Nope.
To my left?
I'm sorry.
No? All those in favor of the motion to adopt the minutes as presented, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number five, that is the public comment portion of our meeting. I do not have any written requests, I do have some written requests for items on the agenda, which we'll address under those items. Is there anybody in the council chambers this evening who'd like to address us at this Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion and move on to the consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda are routine items, there are items number six through nine. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Henkin?
Make a motion to approve as presented, the consent agenda.
We have motion and a second, is there any discussion?
No, sir.
I just have one quick question, I will not pull the item off, but it's for Mr. Wyatt, if I may, and it's on item number 2987-15. You have Lake Jessup and West Mitchell Hammock Road. We're trying to do that in coordination, I'm assuming, with the connection through the back over to El House?
With the cross access, yes, sir.
All righty, so this is all part of that?
It's actually separate, but it will be connected to that, that cross access.
Okay, and that cross access is still in the works?
We're working on it as we go, yes, sir.
Great.
Bobby, quick question while he's on it. If everything goes correct and good, no issues on this, how, when do you think that could be in, if everything went?
We're talking about the improvements for approval tonight?
Access road, the light, the whole thing?
I suspect the access road will be there before the actual improvements at the intersection. They're on a, they're, they're on a quicker pace than we are. We have the intersection improvements slated in the CIP for next year for construction. So I, I don't want to give you a timeline yet, but it's next fiscal year, yeah, everything should be buttoned up and done.
Any other questions, Bobby? Thank you, Bobby. And just so everybody's aware, what we're referring to is there'll be a, an access road behind Jordan Crossing from the El House to Lake Jessup and then Lake Jessup has been programmed for a light for many years, so you'll be able to make a safe movement leaving the El House or Jordan Crossing or any of those businesses there if you're trying to make a left and head west on Mitchell Hammock Road, so that's what we're working towards. All righty, are there any other questions on the consent agenda from council? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. The motion on the table is to adopt. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to our first public hearing, it is ordinance number 1620, fats, oils, and grease waste disposal. Mr. Group, can you read that ordinance by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida relating to fats, oils, and grease regulation and management, providing for definitions requiring actions by sewer system users, relating to the control and elimination of fats, oils, and grease discharges into public sanitary and storm sewer systems, providing for legislative findings, intent, and purposes, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for penalties and enforcement, providing for a savings provision, providing for conflicts, providing for complication and correction of Scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Group. Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten us?
Yes, Mayor. This is a request for council to adopt an ordinance related to the proper collection and disposal of commercial and non-residential fats, oils, and grease waste. The code name for this ordinance was FOG and I thought it was duly appropriate. While the current building code ensures that grease traps are installed in commercial and food establishments, the city does not have an established monitoring program addressing the issue of appropriate collection and disposal of these amounts of fats, oils, and grease. Adopting the ordinance, it gives the staff the opportunity to inspect logs that reflect the quantity, the date, and the method of disposal of these products. The logs will be required to be maintained onsite and the inspection will become part of our existing routine through our NPDES stormwater program. Ordinance 1620 has been reviewed and approved by the city attorney. It's recommended that the city council conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1620.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. As I did mention, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak for or against ordinance number 1620? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Henkin?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1620.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Councilman Henkin, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Cobb, I have just one thing. I was reading in the staff report, so should this pass, are we only going to have our people going out and look at the logs that are created by each business or are they actually going to look at the infrastructure on the premise, you know, their grease traps and things like that, or is it just going to be looking at their logs as, as was written in here?
Actually, Councilman, I'm going to ask Mr. Wyatt if he'll come up and address the question for you.
Primarily to look in their logs, however, there should be some onsite inspection of infrastructure as well. We are equipped to be able to do that.
Okay.
Put a camera down the line if we have to.
So it's working out?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks, Bobby.
Anything else from Mr. Wyatt? Are we having?
Nope.
No? Thank you, Bobby. Deputy Mayor, I'll just go down to you, any questions?
No, I had the same question, but it was answered, yep.
Okay. Councilman Schenck? Councilman Britton? All righty. Hearing no other questions, the motion on the table is to adopt ordinance number 1620. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to first reading of ordinances, we have none and we have no resolutions, meeting over. Just seeing if you're all awake. All righty, we're up to item number 12. This is resolution number 2981-15. This is Hammock Park PSP. I will turn it over to Mr. Cobb for some background.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the city council to approve site development order number 441-15. This is to approve a preliminary subdivision plan for a 23-lot, single-family residential subdivision. The subdivision is located on the west side of Shangri-La Lane, approximately 227 feet north of Artesia Street. The total land area is approximately 9.91 acres and the proposed subdivision currently comprises three parcels. The future land use designation for the property is low-density residential and the zoning district is R1, single-family residential. The minimum lot width within the zoning district is 80 feet and the minimum lot size is 8,500 square feet. The applicant proposes lot sizes that vary from 9,600 to 18,886 square feet. The minimum lot width is 80 feet with most lots reaching a width, with some lots reaching a width of 115 feet. The applicant has requested two deviations, both to LDC Section 4.12. There is a deviation to, to the front building setback to allow a, the buildings to be set back 15 feet from, to the building and 20 feet to the garage. If you should have received an email from Dr. Correa this weekend, we would ask that this deviation be limited to those properties where there is a side entry garage. Also, there is a deviation request for the rear setback of the building to reduce from 25 feet to 20 feet. The subdivision does have fewer than less, fewer than 25 residential lots, therefore, per Section 17.1B of the Land Development Code, the applicant will be paying $8,130.50 in lieu of constructing a, a park. The Development Review Committee and the Planning, Zoning, and Appeals Board have both reviewed this subdivision and recommend approval and it's recommended that city council adopt resolution number 2981-15.
Mr. Cobb, can you just repeat that? You said the DRC and PCA both recommended approval?
Yes, sir.
With the changes as we see?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. The applicant present?
Name and address for the record, please. William Sullivan, 1350 Orange Avenue, Suite 201, Winter Park, Florida 32789. I will be speaking first and then my engineer will be following it up to answer any questions. I wanted to first start by thanking the homeowners associations of both the Hammock Reserve and the McKinley Mill. We made a lot of progress with them and our plan reflects that progress. On the McKin, on the Hammock Reserve section, we are putting in a loop water system to service both communities that will bring, the city will connect, we're getting, we got an easement through them, a utility easement, to build a loop water system that will improve their water quality and also their pressure in the long term for them and for us, and so we took care of a city, you know, a city need that was needed to be taken care of. On the McKinley Mill, we, we had many discussions with them. We, in McKinley's Mill, we are putting up a fence along the boundary with trees behind it and the tree plan shows that there's trees right behind the, right behind the, you know, along the lot and then there's only two lots that back up the McKinley's Mill and the rest of it is a pond, so they, only really affecting two houses in McKinley's Mill, and so we've reduced the amount of, you know, impact that we had to McKinley's Mill. And I just wanted to do that and, you know, and we also, this past week, have met with Mr. Correa, who will be spoke, speaking in a few minutes, and we made progress as far as some issues are concerned with him, although most won't be resolved necessarily tonight. We will work out what we can through the final engineering plans and I think, you know, at the end of the day, then we will have resolved most of the issues.
Any questions for Mr. Sullivan?
I have one.
Upset, wait.
You said there are only two houses that affect McKinley's Mills.
It affects them as far as having a house behind them. The rest of them have a pond, yes, ma'am.
Right. And then you're going to put a fence there?
Yes, ma'am.
And two, you said you're going to put trees behind the fence?
Yes, ma'am, it shows it on the plan.
Whose, whose property are the trees going to be on?
On the owner's, on our owner's property.
On your owner's property, not McKinley Mills?
There won't be a burden on them, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. That's all I, that's all I have right now.
Mr. Sullivan, I see that you've agreed to some sort of a wrought iron fence design, perhaps?
No, we talked about it this morning and we've not agreed to it. I said that I would investigate it and see if we can come up with it. I mean, if we could put the plan to say one or the other and then we figure out economically which is, you know, a viable deal. I haven't checked out, I haven't had time to check out the, since it was only brought up this morning, I've not had time to check out the environment, you know, the economic impact of it. Plus, there are some owners that may not want it, you know, if you've got a pool in your backyard, do you really want wrought iron? It's kind of a hmm.
But I'm just reading what we're... But I'm just reading what we were saying. Then, no bigger than 3,500 square foot home on those two homes?
On those two lots. And additionally, we moved the setback on lot, what's it, lot 15? We moved the setback, the side setback is 20 feet. So we really did help him out. Eric had a problem. We made sure that his side setback was, was 20 feet.
They are requesting a one-story home be built on those two lots. Are you ready to commit to that?
No. And the reason is, is let me explain, is that in the evolution of a, of a community, as McKinley Mills get older, those houses are zoned the same as we are, and they'll have the opportunity, most likely, as values go up in your town, and it's kind of going that way, there'll be tear downs, and people will build two stories on some of them. And I don't want to take away our rights to do two stories when they would have the rights to do two stories as well.
Okay. Alright. Any other questions from Mr. Sullivan at this time? Nope. Thank you, sir. I didn't realize he had a cheering section.
Good evening. David Evans, Evans Engineering, 719 Irma Avenue, Orlando, Florida 32803, here on behalf of Potomac for the Hammock Park subdivision. Obviously, Mr. Sullivan has summarized some of the issues that we've been working through since the annexation, the rezoning, and the land use change that we were here before you in November. We've, you know, added some elements to the PSP, the preliminary subdivision plan, including utilities that Mr. Sullivan summarized, and some drainage elements. And I know we've had some discussions with some of the surrounding neighbors way back before we even submitted the annexation application to the city. The drainage in the, in the surrounding areas, we've taken a look at some of the boundary conditions. We've looked at where the drainage currently goes through the property, and obviously, with our proposed subdivision, we don't want to do anything adverse or harm any, any of the adjacent subdivisions with any additional drainage. So, the system includes a series of swales and a wet retention pond over in the northwest corner that will ultimately drain to an existing stormwater outfall system through McKinley's Mill that was taking drainage prior to, when we were there, and actually provided for this property by McKinley's Mill when it was developed initially. That system is integrated. We've worked a lot on it. We've actually started some final engineering work. Obviously, this is in preliminary format because it's the preliminary subdivision plan. But we did, like Mr. Sullivan said, meet with some of the adjacent homeowners, including Mr. Craig, last week, and took some good notes, had some, a good dialogue with his consultants, came up with some, some ideas together, kind of held hands and looked at it. And we feel like through the final engineering process, we can accommodate those issues and concerns, and we were happy to share those with them in the future as well, so that we understand we're on the same page through this process. Other than that, we're happy to be here with the preliminary subdivision plan. Obviously, we're anxious to move on to the final construction plans. As you can see, Shangri-La Lane is proposed, is to be completely paved, and we've got the intersection improvements there tying into Artesia. So, here to answer any questions, and would appreciate the opportunity to come up and respond to any comments from the public as well afterwards.
Any questions for Mr. Evans?
I have a question. I'm not sure if it's, it's, you're the right person to ask this, but I want to go back to the two-story houses on those two lots. And you said you're not considering the one-story home. Can I ask why?
I think the idea is that what he's, what, what this project has set up so far, and we've actually done a survey of the two neighborhoods that have bought the property north and west. Now, there are a couple of two-story homes in McKinley's Mill adjacent to the boundary now, and I know that at least, if not all, of the, of the home sites on the north are also two-story as well. So what he's asking is that he doesn't limit, he did limit the area of the house to be 3,500 square feet. So if you think about that in terms of a 1,700-square-foot footprint or plate times two, it does limit the size of the house. I think that was one of the concerns of the residents on that side as well. He set it back further from the property line so that there wouldn't be any adverse closeness on that side setback, on that side adjacent to McKinley's Mill. So, in doing those two things, and a minimum lot size of 9,600 square feet, greater than the required minimum area for R1 zoning as well, and we actually talked about that during the initial rezoning phase here. So doing all those together, he would, doesn't want to limit the builder to a single-story house on those two lots, and that was his concern.
Anybody else? Quick question. Shangri-La, is that going to connect up to Hammock Reserve?
Currently does not. The right-of-way stops about midway through Lot 2. And then that's a private parcel that goes to the north and wet, and east. So, we know that there was a preliminary subdivision plan for McKinley's that tied down into that with a cul-de-sac at one time. We did review that. But at this time, we don't, don't have control of that property to the north and east. And then, like I said, the right-of-way stops at Lot 2 currently.
Hmm. Any other questions? Nope. We're good. Thank you. Anything else from the applicant? Nope. We're going to move on to the public comment portion of our meeting. I have four written requests. I'll just take them in the order that they were placed on the dais. First written request I have is from Mr. Michael Jones, and can we have the shot clock, please?
(inaudible)
Set it for five minutes, please. Or you can just put it up there, and we'll let it run two minutes long. How about that? That's fine. It'll keep counting down.
Play music like the Oscars. Let's get louder.
Oh, there we go. Thank you, Linda. Go ahead, Mr. Craig. You're on.
Hi, there, guys. I'm Mike Craig. My home is at 1030 Shangri-La Lane here in Oviedo, and I'm the, our family are the property owners immediately south of the planned project. As I communicated back during the annexation rezoning of this property, we have no objections to the development of this project as residential. We have no objection to 23 lots, assuming they're done satisfactorily with minimal impacts to our property and other properties. One of the issues that comes up for me is there's been an evolution of preliminary subdivision plans, and effectively, with that evolution, the city is now asking a developer to take the plan level to roughly 50 or 60 percent of a final plan. There's a lot of detail within this preliminary plan. I'm going to ask Mike Sims and David Allen here to speak as the engineers representing me, rather than me getting into a lot of detail, but a quick summary is I don't think, we don't think that the project will work as presented in preliminary subdivision plan, and the city will actually be obligating yourself to what you can look at on the final plan, because there's some very specific things like retaining walls and grading that could be very serious impacts if constructed as shown. As shown, I'm very certain that this project can't get a St. John's permit. I think there's some legality that you guys can't hold a project up while you get permits from other agencies, but I do think you should be aware of that. So if I can, I'd like to turn this over to Mike Sims and let Mike continue some of the technical comments.
You just reset the clock. Thank you, Linda.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Michael D. Sims. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Florida. Forty-two years in engineering, 34 of them licensed. I've done a lot of work for the city of Oviedo in the past.
Great.
Had a lot of work in the city of Oviedo in the past. My address is 193 West New York Avenue, Lake Helen, Florida 32744. I represent the Craig family, meaning Michael Craig, his wife Kathy, and his mother-in-law Maxine. They constitute the property owners along the entire southern property of this proposed development. They probably are the largest potential impact of it. He has myself and Mr. Dave Allen, another licensed professional engineer, here to look at this thing. And he has, as you know, Mike Craig also is a licensed professional engineer, a civilian. All of us have worked in land development. It's something we do, we know it. We know these folks that are, that are designing. We know these other engineers and everything. So we, so we know that the deal is get as many lots as you can out of a piece of land. That's what they're doing. So, Mike hired us to take a look at this, and he says, you know, he says, I've got my own thoughts on it. Tell me where I'm wrong, tell me where I'm right. Take a look at their plans. Tell me where you think they're wrong. Tell me where you think they're wrong. That's what we did. And here's what we see. I know you've got a handout. We didn't have the chance to put together a good PowerPoint, because we couldn't get it in in time. We did indeed meet with their engineer, Mr. Evans, and Bill Sullivan, last Wednesday, and was able to air some concerns. Apparently, in, in, in the background of it, Mr. Craig had provided the city with a letter back in November expressing kind of the same concerns he still has today, then hoping that in the preliminary site plan, when it showed up, it would, it would reflect some of his concern. It didn't. He, he didn't really reflect any change to his concern. Whether or not the final design plan comes up and reflects them, we don't know that yet. What we know is what we've got and what's proposed. He has myself and Dave to look over it. And here's, and here's what we see, and here's, here's what we think. This site, Mr. Craig is on the high side of the slope. Everything's going toward 434 from Shank, from Artesia down toward Lake Jessup. He's on, he's up on the higher side of it. Ordinarily, you can't, can't do much downstream to affect the guy uphill from you. You can affect the guy downhill. Well, in this case, they are. The drain, surface drainage flows that way. Groundwater flows that way. Groundwater's very high on this site. We've reviewed their soil report, water tables a foot or so down during the rainy season. Makes it, makes it tough to develop. They've got some thick deposits of organic soils, one to three feet, that they've got to take out of the site. That makes it tough on percolation, it makes it tough on their stormwater. So, as a result, and I would say, we, we all work in land development. As a result, they've had to pick up their streets out of the ground, get it out of the groundwater. And now, while the drainage and the groundwater is going north, they're pulling their lots as C-grade lots, if you understand what those are. They grade from the front of the lot back to the back and picking up its swell. They're proposing to put a wall along the 660 or so feet of Mr. Craig's family's property. And so that drainage will come back against it, and it's just going to saturate everything worse than it saturates now. So that's not a good deal for them. And on top of that, there are two septic tank drain fields, which are elevated ones. The reason they're elevated is because water table's so high. Mr. Craig's in particular is, is close to that property line. It will saturate that, and without some provisions to keep that saturation from happening, his drain field's going to fail. And in extreme storm events, he's going to have water piled up all over his backyard. There, there are some provisions in the plan to pick up that groundwater table at either ends, but he's got to hit that wall and run to those ends, which means he's got to pile up on it. So that's one of the big concerns that he's got. And I can, without being able to put graphics up, it's, it's tough to, to explain what they're doing. But the, most of the development is contrary to the natural drainage patterns. And what, what happens is, on this site, and it, it's the result of the, of the particular soils and the physiography of the site. We have essentially pretty lousy soils. We've got thick surface organics. We've got soils blowout that do not percolate well, water table's high. And also, this is, development is in the watershed of an impaired water body. Impaired water bodies means it's already polluted, and it's Lake Jessup. The state and the Water Management District says, well, what you've got to do is you've got to balance your pre-imposed phosphorus loadings. And that, and that generates pressure on the stormwater scheme that they have to do on these developments. And so as you, as you try to do that, now you're limited to under drains because you're picking up groundwater with phosphorus. You're starting to get limited to the types of stormwater treatment systems you can have, dry retention or wet, low retention. So, it makes it very tough. And in the, in the process of trying to overcome those limitations, which we understand, because like I say, we work for developers too, they're going to bring this site up, they're going to take out all this organic stuff, replace it, put more fill back in. All that's going to generate a lot of traffic on Shangri-La and Artesia, wherever all these trucks are going to go. And I'll, I'll give you an estimate of what I think here a little bit later. So they're going to bring this site up, and that's what starts fighting, and is going to run all this runoff back toward Craig's property. That's a major concern. What happens is, is, in that process, is that they're going to nuke the site. There are no trees. Their plan says all the trees got to go. Lots are tight, eight-foot setbacks from the houses. They're wanting 15 feet at the front, back. They've got, drive each other, they're crunching everything in there. There will be no trees left on the site, including along Mr. Craig's property. He has a couple of trees that we think fall into as heritage trees, which means, you know, diameter of breast height greater than 30 inches. And so he's got a couple of those. So Mr. Craig has always been interested in saving some of those trees along it. I'm out of time.
That's okay. You can wrap it up. I'm not going to shoot you away.
Okay. You want me to just go right to the summary? Can I get by with that?
Sure.
I, I do not watch timers. All right. Just summarize inclusion is, is that we, as, as engineers and with Mr. Craig, as I mentioned, it requires removal of all the trees, including the possibility of heritage trees. They've got to dig out one to three feet of organic soils. My estimate is somewhere around 1,018 cubic yard trucks, unless he can reuse some of it on the site. That's a lot of trucks. Now, when he takes that out, he's got to replace it, and then he's got to elevate it another foot and a half or so. So he's going to have about as many trucks coming in to put new fill back in. So that's a tremendous amount of traffic there for a short period of time. The grading plan reverses the natural grades, which we've already covered. It's going to send it back down on Craig's property. That's a major impact for him, not only short-term, it will be long-term without some kind of engineering works to relieve it. The, the deviations that they're requesting, which is some changes in slopes, some changes in maintenance berm widths, all of that's to cram these 23 lots into a city-sized piece of property. They could lose some lots and relax some of that stuff and get by, but that's why they need the deviations. And, and, and just lastly, just the, the density, meaning the 23 lots on 9.91 acres, the specific site soil and physiographic conditions of that site, meaning high water table, poor percolation and everything, makes it very difficult for that plan that they've got to be viable, and we think is probably not going to be permissible. And what they need to come back with is a little bit less aggressive plan for that piece of property. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions? Any questions? We're good. Thank you. Good evening. Hang on one second, Mr. Allen. Is this the correct order? Is this the correct order? Should I have Mr. Allen first?
Okay.
All kinds of C.
Yes.
How are you, sir?
I'm doing well.
Excellent.
My name is David Allen. I'm with David Allen and Associates. My address is 106 Call Your Drive, Longwood, Florida 32779. And I will not repeat what Mr. Sims said, but I will go through what I found when I was asked to review the, the plans. The first item was the drainage, the surface drainage of Mr. Craig's lot and Maxine's lot, this jester, flows to the north. The wall appears to block that surface drainage. There were two low areas that everything drained to, that crossed, the contours crossed that common property line. And with the wall, that'll be blocked. The second item I found was the stormwater plan that allowed for the drainage swale on the northern side of the wall. on the northern side of the wall drains apparently all to the west, where it is picked up to a, with a ditch inlet. That ditch inlet is then connected to an outfall system from the stormwater management pond that is adjacent to Artesia. This would be allowing only the treatment in the drainage swale before it's discharged into, for lack of a better term, clean water from the other stormwater pond. The other thing I noticed about that particular drainage easement was the eight-foot-wide easement, which does not allow sufficient room to maintain that swale. In addition, there is no easement down any of the property lines for the homeowners association or the city, in case it fails, to do any maintenance. So you really don't have an access to get to it. The third item goes back to the wall. On the detailed sheet, that wall is shown to be directly on the property line, which does not allow for the footing that would encroach onto the Craig's property. So the wall would need to be shifted away from the property line to allow the construction of the footing. It was at that point that I also looked at the impact of the trees. There's a 30-inch tree noted on the plan that really is 35 inches, right on the property line. There are also multiple 10- and 12-inch trees just off of the property line on Mr. Craig's property that would be impacted by the wall. Since there was this 30-inch tree, heritage tree, I looked at the calculations by the landscape architect, and I did not find where there was a one-inch to one-inch replacement as required by the Land Development Code. I also looked at some general observations on the plan. The deviation, number one, that allows the slope modification to be acceptable to St. I've known David Evans for a long time, and I'm sure he's very confident with the district, but I've never gotten a five-to-one slope on a wet pond. They've always held me to six-to-one slope. So I don't know that that would be permissible. The project has to go to St. John's because there's wetlands on site. Therefore, it doesn't qualify for the self-certification by the FDEP. The question I ask about the front setback was the change to allow only 15 feet from the right-of-way to the garage. I don't know that you can, I know you can't park a Suburban, but I don't know that you can park a regular-sized pickup in that area without encroaching into the sidewalk, which does not meet the comments in the engineering standard manual.
Mr. Allen, do you have a summary for us?
Well, that pretty much is everything that I need, except that the reason we've come tonight is that in researching the Land Development Code in Section 3-5, subdivision, subsection B, statutory subdivisions, and subsection 2 specifically says, "A final engineering plan may be approved upon the review, approval, and issuance of the site development order for the preliminary subdivision plan," as though the review and approval of a site construction type 2 permit also. So looking at that, it appears to me that any approval of this gives the developer a vested interest in the design criteria and the methodology that they used. But I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do you defer to who? You may. This is the public comment portion. If you'd like to speak now, you may. Once I close it, it's closed.
Even for a rebuttal?
I have a question to the attorney. What Dave just asked you, or just said, is that correct, that once it's approved, they're not going to be able to change it finally, engineering plan?
Just for the record, can you just do your name and address?
I'm sorry, Michael Jones, representing Mr. Craig.
Mr. Groot, would you like to answer the question?
If you ask it, not if somebody, only if you say, "Answer the question," but I think it's more appropriate-
Mr. Groot, so I don't have to repeat the question, or nobody on council will have to repeat the question. Could you answer Mr. Jones's question? Let me just make sure-
Well, actually, I think it's more appropriate for Dr. Care to answer it, don't you?
Counsel agree?
I think Dr. Care should, I think this is the evidence that's being presented before you, so I think it'd be appropriate for Dr. Care to answer that question.
If I understood the question you were asking, if this is a preliminary subdivision plan, so?
One second.
Yep. When this is approved, then we'll review the final engineering plans.
Well, we wouldn't answer, I wouldn't answer. Don't answer that. Don't answer that. Dr. Care, thank you. I can see where this is going.
This commission, I understand, directed that developer, Craig-
That's my understanding, they did have that meeting.
They had that meeting Thursday, last Thursday. I attended, and at the meeting, there were a lot of discussions, going to take some ideas. We asked, "Put that in writing, so we can tell you."
Okay.
Haven't seen that.
Okay.
Nothing's been, has come forward yet. We're concerned that what we heard tonight, all the concerns, you do have a flooding concern. You have a problem. I would suggest that, you know, deny their permit, we're not asking, give us a chance to come down with something hard, something hard and light in what they're going to do. They've made a lot of suggestions about what they were going to do, and we agreed with some of them. But there's other suggestions that we don't know if they're going to do it or not. We'd like to have some thought.
That is the end of the written request, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, David Evans, Evans Engineering, 719 Irma, Orlando 32803. Yeah, I'd like to just respond quickly, because there's a lot of information that you heard tonight from Mr. Craig's consultants, all very good people, know them all very well, and we've worked together for many years. So I respect their opinions, I respect their review, and there's a lot of, as engineers pick up and look at other things, and we've been living with this since November. There's a lot of information that we know and that we've done, that we've worked on since that time, so that we could incorporate that into a plan and come before you. Your staff has reviewed it. Obviously, they have had lots of questions. We've met with DRC, so all these things have been tossed around for a lot longer than a couple of hours. The stormwater system that's designed for this project, and Mr. Sims was completely correct, we are in a impaired water body basin, does require pretreatment, dry pretreatment. We are accommodating that in the preliminary format that we presented to the staff and you tonight, so that we can have some guidance in respect of how we're going to proceed. The final construction plan process includes making sure that all the elements of the construction plan will receive a permit from both the Water Management District and the city. So during that time, we will make sure that we comply with all the codes, Land Development Code from the city of Alvedo. St. John's has a section within the Florida Administrative Code that we must comply with. And all those, the phosphorus treatment, the pretreatment, the post-treatment, the attenuation of the rate before it's discharged off-site, all will be considered during that final construction plan process when we actually run the stormwater calculations and re-review that for the permit application. So to say that the preliminary subdivision plan is done or is final, it is a, in all cities and counties that we work in, there's more and more detail on a preliminary subdivision plan than there ever has been before. So there is a lot of information in here. I could go over all of that. I've got hours of information that I could share with you, but I don't think it's necessary during a preliminary format. I do want to meet again with Mr. Craig's consultants during the construction plan process, share this information with them. We came up with some ideas that they didn't mention during the meeting. Mr. Jones kind of reflected on that. Those ideas were fine with us. We agreed to those. We kind of shook hands. All again, relative and subject to the final construction plan process. So what we'd be allowed to do with approval of the preliminary subdivision plan is come back, share our information again with the city, our final design work, and then also share that with the Water Management District. We've met with the Water Management District. All the elements that were mentioned during the presentations, we've discussed with the Water Management District, so they're on board with where we're going with this. We do that in every project. One quick clarification with respect to the setbacks. I think you understand that we're only requesting the front setback variance or deviation in the case that there's a side-facing garage, only. So if the lot is built conventional with the garage facing the street, then the normal required setbacks for R1 zoning would be used for that lot. Second, the rear setback is only required on one lot. During the process of development of the site plan, we met with the city and staff, and the portion of the wall that was in the right-of-way on the west side of Shangri-La Lane encroaches into Lot 2. The city requested that we not use an easement for the wall but a tract. So when we took the tract out of the lot, we needed an extra five feet to fit the building that we had proposed. So again, that was just on that one piece of Lot 2 only. No other lots in the development. It says that specifically on the site plan in the deviation language. We have a professional arborist, not just a surveyor, reviewing every tree on the property, including the ones on Mr. Craig's property or the ones that overlap between the two properties. They will be reviewed, looked at. They've done that already. Obviously, we have a pretty detailed tree survey here. Again, we will meet the ordinance, the tree ordinance of the city, on any trees that we do have to remove, whether they fit into any categories. And again, that was shown and presented to the city on the tree survey on the mitigation plan as well. Again, a lot of details. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer your questions.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Evans? I don't hear any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not yet. I'm still confused.
I'm sorry?
I don't have any yet. I might-
I am sure that you will. I do have one question for staff, if I may, counsel. Will the final engineering plans come back to counsel for approval, or is that staff approval?
That's staff approval.
That's what I thought. Thank you. All righty. What is the pleasure of counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schenk?
I would like to motion adopt Resolution 2981-15. With the following, the front building setback deviation to LDC, Section 41, Point 12 shall apply, only apply on lots with side-entry garages. And that the maximum square footage of a single-family dwelling units on Lot 14 and 15 shall be 3,500 square feet.
Do you have a second? Do you have a second for discussion?
Second for discussion.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Councilman Schenk, you're at the floor.
Brian?
Yes, sir.
As you just said, the engineering, all this engineering will be gone over in detail with the city to look at drainage, et cetera, et cetera, and every bit of engineering that was discussed tonight.
Yes, sir.
We've been through this before, so I'm just-
Mr. Allen did read a portion of the Land Development Code, and the way that our Land Development Code was structured back in 2005 was that it gave the developer an option. They could have submitted their final engineering plans as part of the preliminary subdivision plan process. This developer chose not to. They chose to submit a preliminary subdivision plan, which meant that they would have to do a two-step process. They get the preliminary subdivision approval, which would establish the maximum number of lots, establish the setbacks, and the preliminary engineering of the neighborhood. Then they will, the second step is to come back with the final engineering, with 100% engineering, which will have to be reviewed by the city and will have to be reviewed by all the other external agencies that review the subdivision of land. The third step in it is to do the final plan. So they will be taking a three-step process.
And I think we talked about this just a little while ago. You know, it's recent in my mind, any water, any discharges, et cetera, that are on-site, they'll have to be taken care of, dealt with on-site. They have to basically, I'm going to put it in layman's terms, any water that's on the site, they have to take care of on their own, and it shouldn't go out into other people's, other property, otherwise it's their problem that they have to take care of.
I believe that Mr. Evans addressed that one in his presentation. He was talking about how the pre-imposed-
Right.
...development, and how they have to meet those requirements for pre-imposed development. So yes, they do have to address that. You know, if you need to have him come back up and tell you about how-
I'll ask him that, then, no problem.
There is a portion of it that's going to leave the property.
Right.
You know, but that's just part of the natural drainage as it is now.
And how it naturally drains currently. The St. John's Water District, they're going to have to go to St. John's, they're going to have to get their permit. That's not our doing. Whether they do or don't get their permit, that's their own problem, so to speak, in getting the permit. We don't have any, I'll say, hold on that. That's a whole separate issue that they have to go to St. John's with their engineering and work out.
They, yes, they have to go to St. John's, they have to work that out, and that's one of the things that Mr. Groot has been very diligent with us, is that we cannot withhold any of our approvals in anticipation of what they may do.
Right. I have to come up for a second, just to ask you the same question. Basically, go over the water, yeah, I mean, I said I put it in layman's terms, but if you want to engineer it a little bit more, please feel free.
Okay, I'll make it for you.
But basically, how does the water work, and how do you take care of the water, and what's the overall?
It's one more step than that. What you said was completely correct. The water that's on the property must be treated properly per the requirements, and you actually have a city requirement and a Water Management District requirement. Like I said before, it's a multi-stage treatment process here, because you have phosphorus in a impaired water body, Lake Jessup, so you must treat it a different way than you would say what Hammock and the surrounding subdivisions, even south and north, did back in the 80s and 90s. In this case, when we do that, we also have to consider the on-site contribution, and that's right here at Mr. Craig's property, who comes from the south. And if that water's coming through our property and draining somewhere else, we have to handle that water. You have two choices. You take it into your system, treat it, and discharge it, or you can route it around your property to the location where it originally went. So we're considering all those options in this particular study.
Thank you. And again, no disrespect, you know, engineers and engineers. I know you guys have a lot of engineering, both of you guys, you guys, I know, we've been asked to relate to our country estates, which is a similar-type project and a similar-type thing, so I know you guys understand these type problems also. But we have a lot of engineers here, and I trust our staff, as I said previously and other times, to make sure and oversight this along with St. John's.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You're going to defer to him?
Yeah.
All right. Councilman Britton?
All right. I guess I really didn't get a straight answer when the question was asked of Dr. Care, and I'd like to present it back to Mr. Groot. Is the detail in this set of drawings, if approved, can they construe it as approval to go forward with the same concepts that are in the package and with our approval?
With the same concepts? Yes.
Yes. And what I'm hearing is that I think the- And what I'm hearing is that, I think, the folks that spoke are concerned that they have a technical, professional disagreement with it, and the concern, I think I heard, was that going forward with this gives our task at approval to the applicant to go forward with this same concept, whether it's right or not. If it's not right, let's say they don't get a permit, and they have to redo it, does that mean they have to come back here with another preliminary plan, or can they just go forward with what they want as a final?
Well, first, let me back up and just give one basic, a couple of basic legal principles, okay? What's before you tonight is an application that relates to technical compliance with the code. So unless there's a code provision or provision of the comp plan that's expressed, you can't deny it, okay? If it's technically compliant. The only thing that I heard the applicants refer to as specific citation, I mean, the opponents referred to as a specific citation to the Land Development Code related to tree size. There was no other citation to any code, there was lots of this expressed disagreement. I didn't hear anything citing to a particular code. Your staff has said it is compliant with all codes. The other legal principle is that the applicant has agreed to exceed the minimum lot size requirement expressed in R1, and for two lots, to agree to cap the house size on two lots. Those are conditioned, as I understand it, based upon the requested deviations, because this isn't a putt, this is an unnegotiated zoning district, this is something that's done by rights. So, they've agreed to do that, as I understand it, because of the deviations that are requested, okay? So, now to get to your question. Anything that's approved tonight, a subsequent owner can rely upon, as they should. It's an action relating to an application pertaining to an entitlement.
Okay. And I guess that leads to a question for you, Mr. Evans. And I think, and I'm no hydrology engineer, so the best I can guess is water's going to flow downhill. And right now, it flows downhill to the north, correct?
Right, correct.
And if I understand you, you're going to create a system that captures it in a berm or something, and then channels it around, but what about the water that's underground? Does that still flow downhill the same way it always does, or is this going to change that concept somehow?
Absolutely, absolutely. And like I said, I could speak for hours on this, because we actually, as a group, and something we've been tossing around in the office as well, have looked at the groundwater in this area. Mr. Sims was the first guy who spoke, mentioned that the groundwater table here is high, and we know that it is, I've worked in Oviedo, we did projects all over the place here, so we understand that principle. In that principle, one thing you have to protect, and certainly talk to the city engineer about this as well, is the road base and the road structure, because that's something that's important for access and emergency vehicles and that type of thing. So, what we're doing is actually going to put in a system that controls the water on the site, and allows it to continue to go downhill while the system is being installed. So, what it does is alleviate some of the pressure on the back of this area from Mr. Craig's property, and it also relieves some of the downstream pressure under the development, like you're speaking about specifically groundwater. We also have to deal with surface water, that's the second component of the water-flow issue. So, we're dealing with surface water in a different manner, but similar, by capturing it before it gets through the property. So both will be accommodated in this system, the system is something that's tried and true, it's been used all over. Everybody understands that groundwater does flow, as so does surface water, it's just a lot slower, but when you intercept that flow and keep it from coming up higher and route it, it mimics natural conditions, and it also helps control it underneath the development.
Well, how do you answer the question that they brought up, as far as the water piling up, both, I would assume, above ground and below ground?
Right.
How would you address that?
During final construction plans is when you normally model those scenarios, and modeling is a computer program, or it's also something that you do in the field, from a geotechnical standpoint, to see where the water's moving and how it's flowing. So, the ideas that we tossed around a couple of days ago had a solution to that type of scenario, which it captures the water on the back and keeps it from mounting.
Okay, and you, I guess the rub here is we wanted these conversations to take place and everyone agree before we got back here, and I think that's what the concern is, is now we're here, and I don't think there's a real meaning of the minds or a real strong agreement between what you're proposing and what the Craigs were trying to come up with. And I don't think anyone's being unreasonable on either side, to be honest with you, but I'm just uncomfortable with what I'm hearing here, is that you're not quite there yet.
Well, I think this is the right time to do that. I agree that coming before you and presenting a package that's all-inclusive is a grand idea. Unfortunately, at some point, you cap the preliminary work and move on to the final work, and I think from the information that's been provided to the city and you as a council, that that information will go forward. Again, like Mr. Groot mentioned, we don't get a permit unless we comply with the rules and codes and the Land Development Code, and that's what we've got to do next, and those things would be included in that permit approval, because everyone's aware of them, and it's what we do anyway.
Okay. Did you all go over the 18 items on the list here the other day?
Yes.
And did you come to any agreement on any of them?
I think the idea of the water flow and the stormwater was something that we discussed and went over, talked about in most consideration, because I think that's most important to him as well. There was some discussion on the fence and the wall, there was concern about it being white PVC fence, and that was not the intent, ever. We were using a PVC fence and a wall, we've actually got some other ideas we're going to share, but again, we're doing this as a team approach, as opposed to an individual approach, and we would like to flush those out during the final construction plan process when the stormwater system's final designed, in a preliminary format now.
And I guess the other concern that I picked up on is the eight-foot easement. I live on easements, and eight-foot isn't much wider than a sidewalk, and it's going to contain a wall, or two-foot wall. Yeah, but it's going to have a width that takes up a certain amount.
Yes.
How big is that footer going to be?
We've used stacked stone walls, which we like the best. There's a couple of reasons why we like those the most, is they percolate, they let water pass through them, and they don't have a footer. It's a rock base, you know, gravel base, and then it's straight up. So, with that small of a wall, it doesn't necessarily have to be a footer with a concrete block wall on top of it, it's two feet high, retaining wall.
Okay. I think that's all I've got for now.
Okay, I can...
Mr. Evans, you could take a seat, I've been up there a while, I'll just make some general comments. You know, Mr. Groot brought up a good point, we're here to, you know, just approve the preliminary subdivision plan, that's what we're here, and we have other jurisdictions that have to be involved, but I see where Councilman Britton was going with this. I think when you guys were here in November, we said, "Go work this out," and, you know, I'm just going to say, I have enormous respect for you guys, 43 years, 50, you know, combined, there's a lot of knowledge, and the same thing with Mr. Evans, but I honestly, when I was reading, and I just got handed this tonight, these 18 things, I think you guys just met, I think one gentleman said you guys just met like two weeks ago, from November, last week, to try to hammer this all over, and, you know, I think approving a preliminary subdivision plan, that in my mind, you know, I always have issues with water problems in people's houses and flooding and everything, and every time one comes up here, I always say, "What's the plan?" And I think there will be a good plan, but I don't know what it is yet. And approving a plan that may not be conducive to the water flowing correctly and flooding people more than they are, concerns me a little bit. What I would like to see, and counsel, and I'll take it a step further, and Councilman, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you guys need to go back for two weeks and try to hammer this and get a little closer, because I have 18 things here that I don't think have been addressed, and to approve a subdivision plan that may cause some issues, concerns me a little bit. I don't have a problem with the houses themselves, I don't have a problem with building 20 houses there, as long as they're done correctly, and, you know, just what I'm hearing tonight and what I'm reading, you know, the walls, the berms, they may not be wide enough, I'm not comfortable approving a plan that may flood people's property. And I don't know that that to be the case, but I think there, I certainly think two weeks, I mean, we met in November, and we tried to help, we know this is, for lack of a better word, I think I said back then, a historic piece of property that the Craigs live on, and I certainly wouldn't want them or anybody else to get flooded, and if I'm going to approve a plan that guys with 80 years' experience are telling me might be an issue, one who I have total faith in that says he will remediate it, which I think in the end will be the case, but I don't think you guys are there yet, and I would like to see you guys be a little more together, and go back, and come back here in two weeks, and try to address some of these 18 issues, other than the water, too, because I just don't think you're there. I would just feel a little uncomfortable sending you all home and approving something that, if this went through, that may not work. I'm not saying it's not a bad plan, I mean, I think, you know, I think I've heard the Craigs consultants and Mike himself say they're not opposed to it, but I think you guys can tighten this up a little better and make it good for both sides. That's my thought at this early moment. I know we have a few other steps, not opposed to the houses at all, not opposed to what you're trying to do here, but there are some concerns. If I lived there, I would have the same concerns. So for right now, that's my thought.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
Deputy Mayor?
I understand the concerns about water and drainage, because we hear it. Every time they build in a division, you hear about the drainage and the water and how it's going to affect the neighboring, the surrounding areas. I guess that, I'm just not sure, so maybe Mr. Groot and Mr. Cobb can help me with this. Tonight, are we just supposed to be looking at the deviations, the two deviations with the conditions? Is this where we talk about and decide what, about the drainage issue?
Tonight, you're being asked to approve the preliminary plan, okay? The preliminary plan contains 24 lots. It contains the location of the stormwater pond, it contains the location of the homes, the size of the lots, it contains the setbacks for the lots, it contains the location of the road, it has a preliminary utility plan in it that shows water and sewer lines, may not be the final location of them, but it gives you an idea of how they'll serve the property. And so it sets forth those entitlements, in other words, it explains to you that they have met the minimum requirements for a property, a subdivision within the R1 zoning district, that's what it explains to you. It does have a preliminary drainage plan in it, yes, it's not the final, though. They basically saying, they're basically telling you that they've looked at the drainage of the area and that they have a plan for addressing it, and that as they go through the final phases of the engineering, they're going to, they'll bring us back. There's some very complicated engineering calculations that must occur, that I am not an expert in. But the deviations, yes, this is part of this process, and, you know, the deviations regarding the front setbacks, okay? They're asking that, in the R1, the front setback to the building's 20 feet, they're asking for 15. The front setback to the garage is 25, they're asking for 20, but they're only asking for this on side-entry garages. Now, if it's a front-entry garage, then the standard setback requirements will apply. They're asking for a rear setback deviation from 25 to 20 feet. So, yes, those are two things that should be considered as part of this application. You know, you're basically giving them their, what I would say is their maximum approvals. In other words, you cannot have more than 24 lots. If they modify that plan, and it comes back, as Mr. Groot often says, if it's a substantial modification to that plan, then yes, we'll be bringing it back to you.
All right, well, let me ask you another question about the water and the drainage. Let's just say they go forward and start to develop this piece of property, and they, something happens where the drainage isn't working the way they thought it would, and it's causing a problem to any of the neighbors on the outside, what happens then?
They may have liability to their neighbors.
They will be responsible to make it work and have it drained properly, is that correct?
They, the property owner will be responsible for damages to abutting property owners if that were to happen.
And then, when it's finished, when it's done, and say we get another Hurricane Charlie or something like that coming through, well, we shouldn't use hurricane as an example, but storm, and then they have another problem, that water is coming onto their property, causing damage, what happens after that? I read in here that it does become the homeowners' association responsibility, that if the drainage isn't working, that the homeowners for that new development plan will take on the responsibility to fix it and make it right, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I think my only other comment would be about the trees, and I agree with saving as many trees as possible, I think Oviedo is beautiful with the canopy trees, the oak trees, so if we can save them, we need to save them. And I prefer, and this is just my opinion, I prefer the buffer between two properties be more natural with landscaping instead of fencing. That's just my comment with that, and I think I'm done.
Well, gentlemen, you know, we did ask that you sit down with them a little earlier. I mean, why it took so long, I'm not sure. I don't disagree with anything that you're trying to do here. We've already approved it, I have no problem with it, but what I have an issue with is we waited till the last minute to sit down and talk about 18 simple items. Now, some of them may not be simple, some of them might not be able to be addressed, but do you have anything, other than just standing here and spewing on for another hour, that addresses these 18 issues in writing for us? Anything? Could you put that together for us in two weeks or four weeks' time? Is that possible? No. Mr. Cobb, what do we have coming up on the next agenda? Is it a full agenda?
We have a couple of public hearings, it's...
What do we have on June 1st?
It's nothing out of the ordinary, let me say that.
Okay.
June 1st, I really haven't looked that far out yet.
Pardon?
I haven't really looked that far out to June 1st yet, but I don't think it will be too heavy.
When would everything be due for the next council meeting?
Today.
Right, so that's impossible, so it'd have to be June 1st. Now, with that being said, you gentlemen are just a little bit ahead of your time. I mean, you know, these will all be addressed as time goes on, but I understand the concern that it would have been nice if they were addressed earlier. Some of the things in here, I don't know how they're going to address, but, you know, what I would personally like to see is just a spreadsheet with the questions, the resolutions that have been agreed to, and everyone's not going to get 100% of what they want. And if this is continued until June 1st, we are not spending another hour on it. It'll come into us, we will, council will, if that's what we decide, will look at the answers, and we'll make a decision, because it's, you know, it could just go on and on and on and on and on forever and ever and ever, and we can't have that either. But I do believe that some of these should have been answered. I still believe that this needs to connect to Hammock Reserve, but that ship has sailed.
Mr. Mayor?
Just a moment. So, with that being said, that's where I would lean towards this evening. I see no reason, honestly, not to just approve it, to be frank, but I think these questions should be answered. Councilman Britton, then Deputy Mayor?
Go ahead, I'll defer to Zinn, and I just got a quick question.
Deputy Mayor?
You've asked them to put all these questions and their answers on a spreadsheet.
Something just to answer all the questions, same thing with the other ones.
Sure, I would just like to make the recommendation that you put on the recommendations from McKinley's Mills on that same sheet, so we can see what their concerns and what the solutions are.
That's fine, I could agree to that.
I had one question, and I'm realizing why my, I'm a little confused, there's a sheet in the handout that Mr. Craig provided us that shows a typical, it says typical cross-section, it looks like a slope of the drainage of the area, and I went into the package to try to find that to compare what the...
No, tonight, this was just put on the desk tonight. No, tonight, this was just put on the desk tonight.
But in our package on our iPads, there's the engineer drawings from the applicant. There's only one page. Is that the extent of the package, or is there more to this? Unless I didn't, it didn't download properly.
I think the issue is the technology we have is not downloading the full PSP. Dr. Carrera, can you come up to the podium?
I've got one sheet here, and I said, well, I wonder where the cover sheet is, but it's sheet two on this drawing that shows the lot layout.
You should have one page attached to the, as an attachment to the memo. But then you should have the whole plans as an exhibit to the resolution.
Correct. But the issue once again?
You're not being able to...
Very hard to bring up, Theresa.
And that's why we are putting just one page.
I got a one-page location map.
This is attachment to the memo.
Mr. Britton, if you'll look for, on your list of documents.
Yeah.
Scroll up until you see Resolution 2981-15 Exhibit EX2, Hammock Park PSP.
EX2.
That does not open on my iPad.
This way?
And that's the full set of documents.
Yeah, that's...
And it takes a minute or two to completely open.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, there it is. Okay, let's see if it comes up. Not coming up on mine.
Can I jump for a little while?
Yeah, go ahead.
What's the final engineering? What's the approximately, Brian? And I'm just looking for a rough approval, whatever. Next phase is final engineering. How long's that going to take, approximate?
It generally takes three months.
How much?
Three months, four months.
Three months. Three, four months, the final engineering will be, they'll be working on the final engineering with staff and then St. John's will expect it at that same timeframe or...
It goes at the same time.
So they'll be working with staff on all this for the next three or four months. And St. John's. And again, now, we talked about the legal aspect that was brought up. We approve, they get 25, 24 homes, 23 homes, bump, bump, bump. But they still have to meet the engineering requirements. Even though they're going to get, I'll say vested for certain things, they don't get vested for engineering, like this isn't a vested engineering...
No, sir.
...plan. This isn't a vested, this is your engineering. They have to meet engineering requirements that are going to be determined in final form as this moves on the next four months. What happens if their plan like this doesn't work? What happens? They come in, he wants to divert around. The water's coming in right now, that's flowing and sheeting over and under his, under the property. They're going to say they're going to divert it around. They do all the engineering in the world right now, and they come up and go, it doesn't work. They're not, they don't have the right to, well, you know, we've given them the right to do it around so they can do it anyway, correct? I mean, that's, again, they still have to meet an engineering criteria that says that water has to, whatever St. John's says or...
They have to meet...
But I said, if their engineering plan doesn't meet whatever calculations, it just won't come forward to us on our side. I'm not going to talk to St. John's. We have some engineering calculations, too, correct?
That is correct.
If it doesn't meet our calculations, it will not come forward to us, or it may, but as not recommended for approval. It will be...
It will not be approved.
It will not be approved.
No, sir. They have to demonstrate compliance with the city's engineering standard.
Okay? I gotta say, you guys, you know, two things. On the one hand, and I'll, you seem to work very well with the other property owners. You've done a lot. You haven't gotten complimented for that, and I'll give you compliments because on that side of it seems to have, we've gotten complimentary letter today from those homeowners that said, hey, you've done a great job working with them, et cetera. I'm not going to get into he said, she said, why, or whatever. You got, a lot of issues have been brought up. I trust my engineers have been listening to this. Same with David Waller, whether it's a 30-inch, 35-inch, whatever. David, if, you know, again, Bobby White and David Waller are two engineers that I trust wholly to do their jobs very well. David, unquestionably, in the preservation of trees, as we've been a tree set for, you know, ever. So I look at this and say, yeah, keep talking to these guys. You see their concerns. I know you know these guys very well, work with them. Bobby's heard the concerns. We've all heard the concerns. You know, they've got to be solved in some manner, engineering-wise, that none of us are. That you, Bobby, whether it's talking to these guys, I hope you do because you've heard their concerns, but we're not here to tell you, you have to talk to them. And that's how I feel we're getting it as well. You have to go talk to them, and that's not what this is for. A PSP is not that. It's to do what we're supposed to be doing and say, yes, we look at this plan, there's engineering that has to be done, like every other project that's been through here. So I say, let's get on with this. All the issues that have been brought up, and I'm going to be sure there are going to be a couple of more that pop up from now until three or four months from now that will show their heads and come forth. But it's a preliminary subdivision plan that only entitles them to certain parts of what's in there. The rest has to be engineered.
Anything else anywhere?
Just a quick... You know, and just to, you know, send you guys out, it's always disappointing. You come in, you spend a lot of time, they spend a lot of time, you want to go. We want to get you both to where you're both comfortable. I mean, that's how I've always felt sitting here. You know, you try to make the residents happy, try to be fair to you guys, but as the mayor said, when you guys come back, we got to breeze through this. So we're just hoping you can, you guys can sit down and hammer out as much of this as possible.
That hasn't been the decision yet.
Well, I'm just saying, there's some reasonable things in there that have to do because I'm just seeing some long phases and some disappointment. I'm just, you know, saying, it's hard for myself to approve this when everything hasn't been addressed, and I'm surprised that it took that long, that's all. We'll get there.
Well, the motion on the table was for discussion, and the motion on the table for discussion was approved.
No such thing as a discussion for approval.
You want to withdraw his motion and make one to table?
Will not.
No? You're going to withdraw, your second.
I withdraw my second.
All righty. There's a motion on table to adopt. Is there any other seconds? Hearing non-motion fails. Is there another motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to make a motion to table Resolution 2981 to the June 1st meeting to give...
Continue, continue.
Continued to the June 1 meeting to give the applicant and homeowner some time to work through these issues.
Including the McKinley Mills issues?
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Councilman, do you want to be clear on what your expectations are when they come back?
Yeah, I want to piggyback on what you said. You guys need to sit down and work through as much as this as possible. And, you know, as Councilman Schenk, I think, just said, everybody's not going to get their way, but we're trying to bring you guys a little bit closer. I don't think anybody had a problem with the houses, but with the issues we heard, so, but it's got to come fast. You know, try to give us, you know, a bullet point sheet on these 18, what was decided.
Do you all have this list? Yes. You're going to have mine?
It really looks like it's maybe half a dozen items. There's some overlapping items there, but get to the meat of it and get it done.
Copy for you, Mr. Evans, you can have mine.
And that's it? There's McKinley Mills. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing non-called a vote all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries for one. Councilman Schenk dissenting.
Schenk decides we should do his job, our jobs.
All right, moving along, we're up to item number 13, Resolution number 28, excuse me, 2982-15. This is the Allin Landings at Oviedo preliminary subdivision plan. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to approve the Allin Landings at Oviedo preliminary subdivision plan and non-statutory development agreement. This project was formerly known as the Enclave at Sanctuary, and before that, it was known as the Covenant Presbyterian Church Master Land Use Plan. The property is located on the north side of County Road 419. It's east of Willingham Road, and it's located adjacent to the Sanctuary Plan Unit Development. The subject development was previously approved as a master land use plan and non-statutory agreement for a church on the western side and a shopping center on the eastern side. It was later amended to Phase 1 of the project to have the eastern side be developed as a 31-lot, single-family subdivision. This proposal is to bring in the western part. It's a revision to the western side of the property to convert the church use to 17 single-family homes as par, inconsistent with the R1BB zoning district. The subdivision, the total subdivision will comprise 48 lots. 31 lots were approved as part of Phase 1, 17 is, are part of this proposal for Phase 2. All of the lots are compliant with the R1BB zoning district. The setbacks for the lots are consistent with the zoning district. The maximum building height is 35 feet. Upland buffers will be provided with an average of 50 feet and a minimum of 25 feet. That shall be provided for onsite wetlands. The western 1,100 feet, or the western part of the property that is located within the 1,100-foot Econ Lock Hatchie section zone has been set aside as a conservation area. A seven-foot-wide landscape buffer and fence has been provided on the back of lots 25 through 37 and along the back of Track F, which is a retention area. All internal right-of-way within the residential track will be private. However, the developer must construct all streets to city street standards. And also, there's in the Declaration of Covenants, Conditions, and Restrictions, there will be a funding mechanism for proper maintenance of the streets. Water and sewer will be provided by the city. The access to County Road 419 will possess a dedicated right turn lane. The Development Review Committee and the Planning and Zoning Appeals Board both reviewed this request and recommend approval. City Attorney has also reviewed the development agreement as well. It is recommended that City Council adopt Resolution number 2982-15.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Applicant present? Short and brief, gentlemen.
Ed Moorhead with Madden Moorhead and Gluck, 431 East Ratio Avenue. We agree with the staff report and SDA, and the turn lane's almost approved by Seminole County. Also have Justin Allen with me tonight from MI if you have any questions.
Great, thank you. I have no request to speak forms. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hicken.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2982-15.
Second.
Motion second. Councilman Hicken?
No, sir. It's coming along good, and thank you for that right turn lane. Appreciate it.
Deputy Mayor?
Nothing.
Councilman Schenk?
Can we go in detail about something just for the heck of it and just, you know, rip you apart? Nothing.
Councilman Britton?
I'm not opening my mouth. I'm good.
Don't fear Councilman Schenk. He's all blustery. He gets frustrated with these things, and that's understandable.
Tell you what, though, you guys can put up a house really fast when you want. You come out there one day, drive down, there's nothing there. Next time you come out, there's a two-story house standing there. It's good. Those guys are sailing away.
All righty. Motion on table is to adopt Resolution 2982-15. May I call the question? All those in favor of the motion on the table, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, Resolution number 2983-15.
Should have put you guys first.
Pardon?
Should have put them first.
Should have put everyone first. Resolution number 2983-15, cited Allman Order number 442-15. This is called Harper's Landing. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for City Council to approve a preliminary subdivision plan for a 10-lot residential subdivision, single-family residential subdivision. The pros subdivision is located on the north side of Chapel Street, west of North Pine Avenue. The land area is approximately 3.07 acres. The property has a medium density, future land use designation, and its zoning district is R2. The R2 zoning district has a minimum lot width of 70 feet and a minimum lot area of 7,500 square feet. The applicant proposes lot sizes that vary from 9,511 square feet to 17,097 square feet. The average lot width is 80 feet, with some lots reaching a width of 95 feet. This subdivision also has fewer than 25 residential lots, so the applicant will be paying a fee in lieu of providing a recreational area per Land Development Code Section 17.1B. The, there are a couple of conditions on the PSP. One is that the applicant shall put a plug valve in the forest main of the property line to demarcate the point of ownership. And then also, prior to the issuance of a site construction two permit, the applicant must submit to the city the fee in lieu of for constructing a mini park. The conditions have been provided on the site development order. The Development Review Committee and the PZA both reviewed this request and recommended approval. It's recommended that City Council adopt Resolution 2983-15.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Catch back up to you. Applicant present?
My name is John Herbert with American Civil Engineering Company.
Are you sure you want to do this?
We concur with staff's recommendation. Thank you very much.
You're a smart guy. Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Sir.
What are you going to do with the water?
Give it back to the...
Thank you. I have no request to speak forms. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hicken?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2983-15.
Second.
Motion second. Councilman Hicken?
No, sir.
Deputy Mayor?
No.
Councilman Schenk?
Good.
I do have one question. Is one of these houses facing Pine Avenue? Is that what I see? I'm just, it's a unique use of, it's a unique use of the land. I'm just curious.
Yes, house, lot number one does face Pine.
Right, so Pine will connect all the way through down, through your neighborhood and then over to, I guess that's Chapel.
Chapel? Not quite. There won't be any cross-traffic from Pine through, over to Chapel.
Will it get through to the shopping plaza?
It was deliberately made not to allow cut-through traffic.
Well, now...
Meagre traffic. Pedestrian, yes.
So these folks who live in this subdivision aren't going to have access over to that Publix without going back out onto Pine and out onto 426?
That is correct.
I'd redesign that. Honestly. I mean, why wouldn't you give them car traffic, the folks that are in that neighborhood, access over to the shopping plaza? Now you're going to put them out onto our roads, out onto 426, and all the way over.
Well, the reason we would be doing that is to...
Chapel's right there, just connect it.
Well, like I said, we're trying to avoid cut-through traffic. Staff had concerns with high school students cutting through the project, exiting the school. If we're trying to save an extra 20 seconds from the commute from Pine to the shopping plaza, then it'd be a great idea to do a cross-through. But we're trying to keep the property as natural as possible. We're saving a lot of trees. Making this an infill project was difficult because of the jigsaw-looking piece of land that it is, and cut-through traffic was our major concern for not allowing that to happen.
In other words, we'll just take that traffic, clog it up on the major...
Those extra four cars or extra four houses will not impact a road that's currently taking, I don't know how much traffic, but it's got to be around 20,000 vehicles a day.
Well, explain the four lots to me. I see two lots are already exiting out onto Chapel, and then I see at least eight across the back. So you're talking about those eight are only going to exit out onto Pine Avenue?
No, sir. There will be four lots exiting out to Pine and six exiting out to Chapel.
Oh, I see. Between lot four and five, it's not connected. Is that what you're saying?
Right.
All right, that makes more sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What are you going to do with that water?
Anybody in council have any other questions about connecting this thing?
No.
Okay.
I'm on a limb without a tree behind me. All righty, I will call the question. The motion on the table, I believe, is to adopt. Am I correct? There was a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Opposed, motion carries. Alrighty, moving along. Resolution Number 2989-15, Site Development Order Number 443-15. Now there's a smart man. He gets out of here as soon as he hears the ayes. I said, yeah, I don't blame you. Mr. Cobb, enlighten us.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for City Council to approve a 49, single-family town home lot residential development, currently named Oviedo on the Park Lot 12. The proposed development is located on the east side of Oviedo Boulevard, approximately 581 feet north of the Center Lake Lane. The total land area is approximately 5.47 acres. The subject property's future land use designation is downtown mixed-use. The zoning district is New Downtown District Subdistrict B. The proposed development is located within the Oviedo on the Park Master Land Use Plan. Therefore, the City Council is sitting as the land use administrator. There are two-story buildings located along Oviedo Boulevard, along the north property line, and directly off the pond to the south of the property. There are three-story buildings located into the interior of the project, surrounding the pool and resident area. The applicant will provide parking at a rate of four parking spaces per town home unit, with two lots located in the attached garage and two lots on the driveway. The development will include an additional 10 parking spaces onsite, and will have 131 public street parking spaces available, and will have 31 public street parks, public parking spaces available along Oviedo Boulevard. The applicant does request three deviations. The first deviation is a deviation to the requirement of placing canopy trees within private rights-of-way. They are requesting that the 26 required trees be allowed to be placed in the front yards of the adjoining lots rather than being placed in the private roadway. There is also a deviation to the street tree requirement. Land Development Code 6.4 L5BI requires that 17 trees be planted along the Oviedo Boulevard right-of-way. They are requesting the ability to plant 13 trees along the right-of-way. This is a four-tree deviation, but they have also proposed that the four trees be planted on the private property rather than being planted in the right-of-way they would plant it on the private property. The third deviation deals with signage. The maximum sign height requirement for, in the Land Development Code, is six feet, and so they are requesting a maximum sign height of nine feet, one inch. So it's a deviation of three feet, one inch. It is recommended that City Council adopt Resolution Number 2989-15.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Is the applicant here?
David Axel, Axel Real Estate, 1757 West Broadway Street, Oviedo Suite 1. Here representing the current property owner, Evans Groves. We agree with the staff recommendation and ask counsel to let us proceed with this project this evening. If you have any technical questions, we've got our engineer here. I also brought along, if there's any legal questions with regard to the current property owner, we have Rob Gubeyde, and Lee Chodas is representing the folks that are intending to proceed with this project once this is approved. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer or have those folks answer.
Any questions for the applicant? Do we have any color renderings to submit this evening?
No, sir.
Why?
Why? Because there's no provision in the code for design of these projects, that's why.
There's also no provision in the code for architectural standards of townhomes.
I understand that.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to make a suggestion that we continue this until color renderings are produced and procured and submitted with this application. This is Oviedo on the Park, once again. It's the same thing that we made Ashton do. It's the same thing we've made every other townhome development do, because there are no architectural standards for these things. So we can continue it along. Come on up, Rob. Tell me why I can't do that.
Mayor, members of council, Rob Gubeyde, Baker &amp; Hosteller, on behalf of Evans Groves. One of the things when we moved to the process of City Council moving to land use administrator and taking over these provisions was that the matters before the council, we had these discussions, would be pursuant to the technical codes. And because something isn't provided in the code and City Council wants to see that, I understand that there are a lot of things that council may want to see over time, but if we meet the technical codes, and this isn't the avenue by which additional provisions are placed upon the applicant. So my concern remains, and I asked Mr. Groot to talk to that point if he would, but we can produce colors, we can produce renderings, but then you're asking us to make those a part of the conditions as we move forward, I would presume?
Of course.
Right, and that's not the avenue by which this whole process was intended, and certainly not something that would have been provided if Mr. Cobb was presiding as land use administrator.
Fully understand. I'd like to see my color renderings and like to see what this is going to look like. Like to know why it's not three stories, like to know why it's not mixed-use. I mean, I can, we could spend two hours on this tonight if you'd like. That's the whole reason why we are now the land use administrators. Sorry, Rob.
I'll be speaking with Mr. Groot later.
That's fine.
We'll be back.
Let's see what happens. I have no request to speak forms. What is the pleasure of counsel? Hearing no action, item dies.
Members of the council, my name is Lee Chodas. I was with Carlton Fields, excuse me, Dean Mead Law Firm. We appeared before you a few times. I've recently retired, but I carried on this client for a reason. They're good folk. The contract that they signed obligates them to give architectural approval to Evans Groves, the seller of the land. And they have basically protected the architectural specifics of this project by delegating that to the seller. I understand that's not relevant to this council. However, I would have to say that as a member of the bar, the suggestion that Dave Axel mentioned and that Rob supported is that you would be putting yourselves in an untenable position to try and micromanage the design issues without having a code in place. I appreciate the work you're doing here. I was a member of the City Council of the City of Edgewood for a while, and as a, as a member, I recognize all the commitments that you've made, not only to the council but also to the citizens of Oviedo. I believe that you will be very satisfied with what occurs, but I appreciate the fact that to make commitments for architectural, when the seller has the ability to micromanage the buyer in doing this, would undercut the seller's position to make Oviedo in the park the best center possible. So for that, I would appreciate your indulgence and hope for the approval tonight.
I had already called the question. I didn't receive a motion or a second. Any reconsideration? Hearing none, Resolution 2989-15, for the time being, dies. Moving on, we're up to item number 16.
Mr. Mayor, I do have to speak in that regard.
Right.
If it dies, that's a denial, and you do need to state what basis under the code or comp plan or whatever.
Mr. Groot, I can't make a motion.
Excuse me?
I said, I can't make a motion.
Well, I'm talking to the collegial body, so if there is a denial, it needs to be stated as to what basis the denial is, is supported, how the denial is supported under the code or conferencing plan.
Mr. Groot?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, may I?
Yeah. All I want is renderings, guys. Two seconds. You bring them in, you show them, we'll see the pretty pictures. We can battle this out for months and years. I don't care.
Mr. Groot, sit.
I have a responsibility to all these residents. All of us do. All we want to do is see renderings. If you want to sit and fight about renderings, we'll fight for months. I don't care. Go ahead.
Mr. Groot, you know, sitting as land use administrators now, the point that the applicant makes that it's not in the code to bring renderings. Us sitting in there by us requiring it, what legal issues does that bring against us?
You're applying the same code that Mr. Cobb would be applying or any other body in the city would be applying. It's the same code. You have to apply the code.
Right, so we're applying the code, but our code really doesn't call for renderings now.
That's, that's...
But if we, so if we, if we say that we want renderings now, is that a problem?
You can enact a code that provides for renderings and architectural standards, but right now there are none, so you're applying the code as it is today. Now, if, if you all determine to deny this, there's three deviations that have been asked for. Okay, two of them relate to trees, and if your planning staff can link the deviation to a need for architectural renderings as a, as a condition, then I guess they could say so. And there's also another deviation that's requested for a sign, and if your planning staff can link the conditions for architectural renderings to a sign deviation, then they can say so. But if, if that's factual, that's planning, that's not legal.
Well, I would just say this, you know, you folks, I've worked with you, you've been here for many years. I don't think you're going to build anything bad, but I think it is, it is the thought and the reason we took back the land use administrator. I do agree with the mayor. We're trying to just figure out what it's going to look like, because you have no idea when the approvals come, the emails that come to us. But having said that, I realize it's not in the code today, and I'll make, I'll make a motion. If it wasn't you guys, I probably wouldn't. I'll make the motion, but you guys really, as soon as you can, show us what you're going to build, because it helps us out.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
Why don't you make a motion that we put a moratorium on all building in the city until that part of the code is changed? Very soon.
Well, I was just kind of getting to a little bit of a little compromise.
That would change the code.
A little compromise. Would you guys be able to, even though you don't have to, I'm asking you just in good faith, I don't have any doubt that you're going to build something there, to bring us in two weeks what, what this might look like? Is it possible? Could you do it? To try to compromise here a little bit? Yes, sir.
I, I, is it possible, okay?
Let him, let him answer.
I'm going to speak carefully.
Yes, sir.
Okay? I understand the desire of council to control the quality of what goes in Oviedo on the park. I want you to understand that the property owner I represent probably has more invested as a private property owner in that project than anyone. So they have the same desire. And as Mr. Chodas noted, they have enforced that desire contractually on folks, and they have applied a rather strict set of principles. As a matter of course, we're up here being asked to provide something, and I'll give you an example from recent history, which would be a Beazer Homes project on a property called Dr. Stoner. And the problem you have is, as soon as you show a rendering, there's a desire for something better. Let's get something more. Okay? So is there a problem showing council members what might proceed there? No. There's a problem being obligated to show it, having it become part of the public record, and having a non-final product that might be subject to some variation suddenly be part of an approval with no code. Alright, so I brought today with some anticipation of what might occur, the most recent set of architectural drawings, which are extensive. Do I think they should be part of the record? No. Do I think they should be reviewed? I don't. Do I want to see this project approved this evening? Yes. Do I have these if you'd like to see them afterwards? Certainly. I think they'll meet your satisfaction, but that's your personal satisfaction. You guys have had ample opportunity to address these things as far as codes.
Well, we've been trying, well, one thing, and I appreciate it, Dave, what you're trying to do, but we have, the reason we have this back is we're just trying to figure out, and I have, me personally, I have no issue with you guys. I know you'll build something quality out there. I know the Evans family's, and they understand Oviedo, so I could almost be okay with this, but I think the direction is we're going, especially in there, something these citizens have waited for so long. I don't disagree with the mayor. We're just trying to make sure that it's okay. And I mean, that's, that's the bottom line.
Well, this body will do what it thinks it must. I'd say, please listen carefully to all the attorneys here tonight.
Right.
And this is sitting right here, and if I understood from council, you wish to see it?
Right.
Okay? I don't know how I can keep it out of the record once it's in the record, but I'm not looking for conditions and subsequent reviews and come back next week and change it and stuff like that.
We have a lot, we have a lot of meetings coming up with the code, and one of the things we want to do, I'm going to make a motion now for you guys, whether it passes or not is fine, but I'm not going to violate my own code. Our code is archaic. It's, it's, it needs some work, and we know that. That's why the mayor has facilitated in Brian meetings where you guys have tried to figure out. But one of the things I would think going forward is we would just like to get an idea, and no one's going to, it's got to be like that, like the one you brought up at Dr. Stoner. You know, the mayor said that night, this is the minimum what we want. Is this what you're going to do, minimum? And if that's what it is, that's what it is. I hear where you're going, and I appreciate it. So I'm just going to make a motion because I'm not going to violate my code, but I will tell you, it is coming, that in the future, especially in there, you just want to take a look at it. Me personally, I don't want to be the land use administrator. I really don't. But so many times through the years, stuff came up and buildings got turned the wrong way, or they just looked like boxes. I trust you guys will do an all-right deal, and I'm sure if you don't, you know, then you'll have the, the weight of the citizens on you, and I'm sure we'll ask a few questions.
No, they won't. We will.
Well, we will. And I understand, and I understand...
And that's the frustrating part.
I under, I understand...
Just show us the damn drawings and let us make a decision.
I understand the frustration, but right now it's not in my code, so I appreciate it, Dave. You can take a seat. Alright, I'll tell you what. Can I make a motion that we take a 10-minute recess to take a look at these? Would that be okay? Yes? 10-minute recess to pass them around?
They look great. Look at that.
Alright, 10-minute, 10-minute recess to let council take a look at these.
You got to make a motion.
I'm making a motion for 10-minute recess to council to go through these. Thank you, Dave.
Was it like 10-minute recess?
That wasn't really a 10-minute recess, but I'll call it.
Okay.
There's reasons.
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 Thank you, Mayor. All right, so Resolution 2989-15, I'd like to make a motion to adopt.
Motion second, Councilman Hankin.
No, sir.
Councilman Schenck, anything?
Good.
Councilman Drago?
Good.
Councilman Britton?
One question for staff regarding the deviations. What were the reasons for staff's approval of the deviations? Or recommendation for approval?
These are townhomes, so the lots are smaller, right? And there were no space for them to put the streets, trees on the streets. So they allowed them to place deviation two, four required trees in the lots, individual lots. And the deviation one, they had the 26 street trees allowed within the lots. Because it's a townhome, the streets are narrower too, so they didn't have space in the right way to place the trees. We have been doing that for other projects as well.
Okay.
So there was no reason why to deny the deviation. And then the third deviation for the sign is to allow the same kind of sign that we have in Oviedo Park.
Okay.
So the same pre-standing signs that...
This is part of the sign plan that Mr. Kavanaugh...
It's not, but it's consistent with what was approved for Oviedo Park.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Carrera, so their sign, if we approve that deviation, is going to look just like the one that Ashton has?
Yes.
For instance?
Yes.
So the small little name with the glass tower.
Yeah, that was the idea.
Is that in those plans?
I believe they are.
Oh, there it is. Councilman Schenck found it.
But that was the reason why they requested the deviation.
Okay.
Anything else, Councilman Britton? Councilman Hankin? Councilmember Schenck? Deputy Mayor?
Yep.
Gentlemen, thank you for presenting us with the renderings. They're beautiful townhomes. So go forth and prosper. I'll call the question. The motion on table is to adopt Resolution 2989-15. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No discussion items? Mr. Cobb, we're up to your report.
Thank you, Mayor. We don't need him.
Can I have him?
Those are public records.
That's why I was...
Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. Today, I had an opportunity to tour the National Entrepreneur Center at Fashion Square Mall. Mr. Brian Olivi and I went over and toured the facilities there with a representative from UCF. We've been talking with them about establishing a similar type of initiative with the Oviedo Mall. Mr. Olivi was able to get a good idea of the operations there, the types of square foot, the square footage they may need, as well as the types of infrastructure and amenities that they may need as well. It was a very good session that we had. The focus of the center is on helping small business entrepreneurs get off the ground and get themselves established, even those that have already started a business, helping them to get their business working in the right direction. We found it very fruitful. Mr. Olivi and the executive director of the center had some very good discussions about, you know, space needs and rents and things like that. So he's going to take that back to the mall ownership. We had a, there was a light time there. They explained that they were able to get their CO within 90 days. And Mr. Olivi looked at me and said, "Did you hear that?" And I said, "Yes." And I'm sure that they had a very qualified contractor, which Mr. Olivi then said, "Good point." So, but it was good, a good, good learning experience. Also, on the dice tonight, I have a thing. If you notice, there's a piece of paper and it says, "City Manager Report." During your budget workshop, you had a discussion about a visioning process for the city. And we did issue a request for proposals. As you can see, that we had nine responses to those proposals. And this is just my opinion. This initiative is more than just the city government. This is the future of the city itself. And I look at this as a service that's going to be provided directly to the city council. And what I would like to do is have the ability to bring you a discussion item at your next meeting to discuss the possibility of the city council acting as the selection committee for this initiative. That means you would be reviewing the proposals. You would pare down the proposals, decide who you wanted to interview, and then you would be going through the selection process. Now, the other reason that I think it would be beneficial for you to be the selection committee is that this also has an impact to your budget as you're going through your budget process. Since we did the RFP, there are costs associated with the proposals. So it gives you an idea of the budget impact as you're going through the process to select this firm, if you decide that you want to carry out the initiative. So I'd like to bring you a discussion item at your next meeting. I don't wish to take much more of your time now, but I wanted to lay the groundwork with you tonight and get your okay to bring the discussion item forward.
Brian?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask one question in that regard?
Yes, sir.
I guess it's for Lonnie. I see two, two proposers here that we already do business with. Is there a conflict of interest of us reviewing these when we already do business with those other two companies?
No, sir.
Okay, just want to make sure.
If, if their contracts had included this type of service, we wouldn't have done the RFP. But unfortunately, they don't. Their contracts are very specific, and so that's why we went and did the RFP. The proposals do include prices, yes. But main thing is, is that I would like for you all to act as a selection committee rather than having the staff do it. I feel that this, this item is, is more important. This is a, if you think about it, this is policy direction to the year 2050. And this is also a budget implication. And that is your most important job in my mind.
You want to kind of what we do when we selected Wade Trent?
Yes, sir.
Way back in the day, we had a couple of them that we interviewed.
I mean, you can give me directions tonight, or I can bring you the discussion item at the next meeting.
What is council's thought?
You know, from having that budget workshop, I don't disagree. This might not be a popular decision. I may be on the short end of this, but to me, this is not important now when I need four police officers, I need other things. It's just not. It's, it's a very important thing that needs to be done, I agree. I just don't think it needs to be done now. That's just my thought. We have some shortfalls and some things that I think are much more important. So for me, I don't have any thought of, of doing this this year and spending money when there's greater needs. But I do agree that we need to do it. I just don't think we need to do it this year. That's my thought.
With that, then we need more information. I suggest we do a discussion item.
Yeah, I mean, I don't care about the discussion item, but that's just my, my thought. I'll say that as a discussion item. It's important, but I just think...
Deputy Mayor?
I agree with Councilwoman Hankin. I think it's, we have a lot on our plate right now, a lot of things to be paying for, and maybe this isn't the right time. I believe it does need to be done also, but maybe put it off a little bit.
Oh.
A little while.
Councilor Schenck?
You know, we got to start making a plan. I haven't been saying that for a while. You know, I think we're, we're chasing. We'll start making plans, keep chasing, rip over ourselves, and find problems like today where we go, we don't have code for townhomes, and we're mad at somebody, and the only people we're mad at is, well, we can make it a priority. So we can sit here all day and kind of point around and go, "It was," or "How come?" But if we don't make, like I said, we'll approve Ashton, and we'll approve the one before that. That was a while ago that we know we have, we don't have a code for a townhome. And townhomes are being built, and they're going to continue to be built because they're a viable product that's out there in the market right now especially. And we're a little bit behind the eight ball, and the next one that comes in, we're going to have the same problem. We keep going, "Ah, now's not the time." We have to start making a priority of things. And Robin is very helpful in that in terms of setting up the, this year's budget, I think, helps us immensely by starting early, by knowing the true cost of things, by understanding it a lot better. But, you know, we're looking, we've been working year by year, month by month for eight years, so six years? We've been working year by year, month by month, saying, "Let's have a plan. We got to make a plan." I think we need to put that plan, start making that plan in effect, and then following that plan.
I agree with Councilman Schenck. I mean, we first did that back in, I don't know what it was, 2002, Brian? Where'd the postcard come from? 2002, 2003?
The postcard came out of a strategic planning process around 2002, yes.
And then we've done minor tweaks and updates, but you'd be amazed...
We've never done a vision.
Yeah, I mean...
Not in my tenure here have we ever done a vision.
You, you map out what's going to happen, and that's what's gotten us over the last 10 or 12 years. But, you know, what we've done is not stale, it's just, a lot of what we had is, things have changed, the market has changed, the accomplishments are there, a lot of those original goals. Remember, we used to have them hanging on the walls in here? You know?
Do you have a range of pricing, Brian, yet that you could share with us?
I frankly haven't looked at them yet, to be honest with you. I was wanting to, I'm trying to stay as objective as I can on this. I mean, if, if you are willing to be the committee, I'll serve with you and help you, guide you through it.
Well, there's no, no harm in us looking at them, you know? Because once we look at them, if we don't like the prices, or we can't put it into the budget at the end of the year, we just don't do it.
Well, you may not even like what they're doing. I mean, it's, again, all of this is, do you like the process? They're going to outline a process, and we've been through a couple of little processes that we could all say, "Yeah, we like that one." And we may not line up with each one liking the same ones, but we like certain aspects of some. We may not even like any of the processes that we're looking at besides the prices.
That's correct.
I'm not even going to say it's price yet. It doesn't hurt to look and examine it, and we may not like the price, the process, what they're going to do, and may just say, "Hey, let's look somewhere else or try something else." Or nothing.
I agree with that.
So it sounds like we'll, we'll do it, we'll look at the prices, and then we'll make a budget decision as we go forward.
So do you want to have a discussion item at your next meeting, or are you...
I think we just discussed it at...
You're giving me direction that you'll serve as the committee?
Yeah, we need, we need to have a discussion item because we need to see what the budget implications are. I will, I will...
Well, now, now, I'm not asking you, I'm only asking you whether or not you will serve as the committee. That's all I'm asking you.
That's the discussion.
That's the discussion. The discussion is not whether or not, go in and review the, the proposals. I'll happily provide them to you, but I'm not, I'm not asking you that. I'm asking if you want to be the committee.
Well, we, we turn that question into whether we want to do it or not. So I think we have to have a discussion whether we want to do it or not. I would say that we already have plans. We have a transportation plan, we have a Parks and Recs plan, a couple other ones that go through 2025 now. Yes, we need to start looking at those and updating them, but they're, they're viable plans, and we're, if you look at them, we're doing what we're saying we're supposed to do. If you want to lop on a, a visioning type thing, that's a, that's another whole deal in itself that would lead it into a whole, another 30-year concept plan. But we can stick to what we've got for now, for the short period, and plan a little bit better on the budget part of it if we, if we have to. So that's why I want a discussion item.
I'd just like to know if we're going to be the, the group to pick it. What does that entail?
Brian, I say, what are you asking of us? Because I think we're getting like, we're all kind of like...
I was going to go, that's why I was going to spend that time during the discussion item.
No, no. What are you asking tonight? What's the question tonight?
Tonight, the question is, can I have a discussion item on the AT?
Let's have a discussion item on the AT. Can we have a discussion item on the AT? That's all we want tonight.
Yeah, and that, that's a good point. Bring the process of scoring and ranking that we got to go through.
Okay, we'll do that. And I only have one minor thing left I have to take next week off. I have a situation with my family that I need to be away...
Don't worry about it. We don't need to know.
So, and I'll send you an hour of this notice and let you know.
Who's in charge?
Robin will be in charge.
Right, right. All right. Thank God.
That's all I have, Mayor.
That's a vote of confidence, Robin.
Yes.
All righty, Mr. Gru, anything for us?
Nothing for the good of the order, Mr. Mayor.
All righty. Deputy Mayor?
Well, we attended the Relay for Life the other day. It was very nice at Shane Kelly Park, and attended the Chambers 2015 Ovations where the city of Oviedo Parks and Rec won some type of award.
I have that here from my report.
Mayor got it. So I'll let you go into detail about that, and that's all I have.
Councilman Britton?
Drew, good job on the Relay for Life golf tournament. I think everyone had a good time. And I have one issue, and I guess we can talk about it when we look at future meetings. When are, when is the, the famous cruise going to take place? Are we going to have a meeting that week, or is it during an off week?
No, it's off week.
Okay. I see we had meetings in, in July, and we usually take one, one meeting off and...
Fourth of July, we take off that week.
Uh, I'm going to be gone the week of August 4th too, so I won't be there. So if we want to swap that date, I would appreciate it. If not, then I'll get away. Oh, we have a meeting this year, July 6th. How about sneak in there? Don't we usually take that one off?
No.
No, sir.
Not the first meeting in July?
Yeah.
It all depends if the fourth...
Oh, it depends where the fourth falls.
It depends on where the fourth falls. If the fourth falls on Sunday, we usually don't have the meeting on the Monday. If it falls on the Monday, we don't have the meeting.
Right.
So, it just seems that way.
But we've taken a, a meeting off sometime during the summer, usually, if I remember, whether it's in July or August, whether the kids are in school or what.
I think Councilor Britton might be right. I don't know.
I know we take spring break off, and I would take Christmas off.
Yeah, okay. We'll work that out. That's it. All righty, real brief. Drew, I've got your award. Here's your ovation award that Councilman, Deputy Mayor Drago and I were at the ovations. So you are the best sports and recreation Oviedo Parks and Rec Center. So congratulations. Great job. We leave that up there for you, and you can frame it up and hang it down there. One other item, I think we've been requested, and Mr. Cobb was going to bring it up, but he asked me to bring it up. Tom Kavanaugh would like to have another work session with us on his mixed-use area because he was asked by council members to put together renderings and a site plan, and I believe he has it. So, "I am just the messenger, don't kill the messenger." We can have him come down during the discussion item during the meeting over here. Brief. Mr. Cobb, can you...
What does he want to do?
Because I, I'm just the messenger here.
I, from what I understand, he has a plan for lots 3A, 3B, and 4, which is the area that is not developed. And he wants to show it to you. That's basically my knowledge of it.
Until he meets the requirements of Phase 1, I'm really not, you know, so we got to start. He's still in Phase 1. I know he calls the word Phase 2 as the other building.
Right.
He still hasn't met the requirements of Phase 1 yet.
Brian, why don't you put him on for a discussion item in the future on a slow meeting night? You know, if June, if June 1st looks like it's going to be slow, add him as a discussion item.
I'll be in 10, 15 minutes.
Right, yeah, just tell him it's 10 minutes, presentation.
Okay.
In and out type of thing.
Maybe, yeah, tell him to do it first.
We've got, we've got LDC, we've got budget, we've got...
Oh, I know.
A ton of stuff.
What I keep telling him to. I, I want him to do something formal, and this is his way of avoiding what I want him to do, so...
Is that formal enough? Discussion item or do all?
Oh, it's fine. It's up to you guys. I'm fine with it.
Public meeting. All righty, let's see what else we've got going on here. Councilman Schenck?
Drew, it was a great job at the golf, and, you know, right the next day, staff turned around and saw some of the same staff for Relay for Life at Shane Kelly. So, you know, the amount of work done and, and given by our Parks and Rec Department for Relay for Life is really a great thing. So, you know, cheers to all of them, appreciate everything they've done, and like I said, it was a long weekend for a bunch of them, I know that, so thanks.
Councilman Hank?
Two quick things. Drew, you know, I know we kind of threw you a little curve on the grand opening of the, of the park, the way you did, but I just want to tell you, nobody does it better. Completely followed the rules. We kind of crossed you up a little bit, so, you know, a lot of accolades get thrown around with the parks, but nobody does it better, brother. So don't take that personal, the way you change it. You did exactly what you're supposed to do, talking to Brian, but we're going to have a great day out there, so, you know, everything you did was fine, just keep doing what you're doing, so don't, don't, don't worry about that, that's on us. The other thing I want to say about Oviedo on the park is, and I, I immediately texted the chief, you know, I'm a night owl, I like to go out at night when it's a little more quieter, and to see our officer riding his bike through Oviedo on the park last week is, is such a nice touch. I thought it was great, and he was doing his job. He kicked a bunch of people in areas that weren't supposed to be in there. He almost kicked me out, so I told him who I was, you know? But, you know, it's, it's, Chief, that's a great program. Keep it up and, you know, try to, let's expand on that. I think the residents out there feel a little safe to see one of them riding around the park there, a couple of them out there at night. And, you know, he came on at 6:00, and he's working till 6:00, so he's in and out there all night. That's perfect. So that's a great job, Chief, so good, good job.
I liked it, I was there the other night, and a couple, and some people that live there. We were walking around, and people that were in there walked around, saw some of the officers, came back, were like, "Hey, we just saw some of the officers." It's great to have them in the park, it's wonderful, so they're being noticed by the residents and those walking around, so it is a good thing.
And Lars, I mean, I actually, it was weird because I, I texted chief about the bike, and I texted you about the memorial. I mean, that thing at night looks tremendous, so, I mean, that's, that's one of your shining moments among many you've had, so can't wait till it's all cut and everybody's out there enjoying it. So all three of you guys, great job.
I liked the crime scene tape around the whole park. Whose idea was that? I was looking for a chalk outline, I didn't find one today.
There you go. That's it.
You know, we all forgot to announce, May 16th is the ribbon cutting of that exceptional park, so...
Yeah.
9:00 AM ceremony for the ribbon cutting, music starts at 10:00. It goes on until, what, 10:00? 9:00 at night. So wine, beer, music, fun for the kids, correct? Lots of fun.
Hey, Lars, do you, are you going to have some sort of index like they have at the Vietnam Memorial where we could look up a loved one's name and it'll tell you which panel they're on?
We'll have the paper topic for that. The reason why we kept posting it is the same reason.
Okay, all right. Okay, thanks.
Great. All righty, future meeting dates, I'll run through them real quick. We have regular sessions on Monday, May 8th. These are all 6:30. Monday, June 1st, Monday, June 15th. We've got Monday, July 6th, Monday, July 20th. Then we have work sessions, Thursday, May 21st, 6:30 PM. Then we've got one Thursday, June 18th, 6:30 PM. Monday, June 22nd at 5:30 PM. And then we have a budget meeting Thursday, July 23rd at 5:30 PM. So we got a busy couple of months, and then we'll fit in vacations and whatever else we can do. With all that being said, it's a little bit after 9:00, we're adjourned.